Meeting called to order. Today is Tuesday, March 7th. It is now 7:01 PM. Town Council meeting in the town council chambers, 1170 Main Street, West Warwick, Rhode Island. John will lead us in prayer.
Heavenly Father, we have gathered here this evening as your humble servants. We seek to represent the good citizens of West Warwick with honor and integrity. May all of our efforts be blessed with your wisdom. May our personal faith give us the strength to act honestly and accordingly in all matters that come before us. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Lichardi?
Yeah.
Councilman Padua, phone ring.
Can we put all phones on vibrate, please?
Councilman Messia?
Yeah.
Councilman Padua?
Yeah.
Council Vice President D'Amico?
Yeah.
Town Council President Goslin?
Here.
There is a quorum on record. A resolution opposing the sitting of the Clear River Energy Center in Burrival sponsored by Council President Goslin.
I'll move the resolution for discussion.
I'll second the resolution.
Move and second, any discussion? We received a few letters on this matter. Just seeing if a gentleman I'm supposed to be here is here tonight. Just state your name for the record and just give us an explanation of what you get.
Sure. Thank you, Council. My name is Mike Lemarow. I'm a resident of Burrival. I'm also a member of the Burrival Land Trust. And I thank you for the opportunity to come here to speak today and thank you for your consideration. I brought a couple handouts. I have probably given you versions of this in the past, but... Just to give you a brief overview of what's going on in Burrival. So there's a proposal for a 1,000-megawatt gas-fired power plant to be sited in the northwest corner of the state in the F5 zone region that's surrounded by our state parks. So if you're familiar with Burrival, if you know where George Washington Park is, Pulaski Park, Buck Hill Management, there's a Boy Scout camp over there, and then on top of that, the Burrival Land Trust owns 214 acres of land in town, all in that same area. The reason why all that land is there isn't by mistake. It's by design to preserve that area of the state. In fact, much of our taxpayer money goes to support the efforts to preserve that. So typically when we have an election, there's an open bonds question that typically gets supported by a rate of about 65% or so. That's where we get the funding to upkeep that property up there. So that particular location, interestingly enough, if you're familiar with Burrival, we have another power plant that's half the size of the one they want to put there. When they did that proposal back in 88, this particular site was one of the proposed locations. They had 30-something locations at the time that they proposed. Rhode Island DEM eliminated this as one of the proposed locations because of where it is in location to the state parks. So that's a little bit about the location itself. I wanted to take a minute and talk about the process, in case you're not familiar. The way that the decision on the project will be made, there's a three-person board. The Energy Facility Siding Board will make the decision of whether or not this goes forward. It's headed by the head of Rhode Island DEM, Rhode Island PUC, and statewide planning. Burrival's role in this, we don't have a direct voice, per se. So what we're able to do is we can give advisory opinions. So our town hired consultants. We spent over $200,000 to bring consultants in to review the proposal to make sure we had a fact-based opinion of whether or not this was in alignment with the town's comprehensive plan and the state land use plan of 2025. So no surprise it came out and said that this isn't in alignment. In fact, if it goes forward, we might as well write a new comprehensive plan because our whole plan is geared around preserving this area. So we've submitted the advisory opinions. The issue is, is that the EFSP can simply ignore them. They're advisory in nature. They can look at them, discard them, do what they want. So you may ask, why are we here tonight? Why are we asking West Warwick for your help? What we need to do is try to get as much support as we can so we can try to have a voice in this process. So to this point, we've been able to get every environmental agency in Rhode Island, including the Audubon Society, the Nature Conservancy, and Save the Bay to come out and make formal statements. And we have 32 municipalities, 30 within Rhode Island, one in Massachusetts, and one in Connecticut at this point.
Now, let me ask you a question. Who in Burrival does have a voice?
So our planning board and zoning board have submitted advisory opinions. So that's it as far as what we can do there. Our town is an intervenor, so we have a lawyer. And they go and they will make a case as part of the hearing.
Isn't this something like Al, when we went through with the power lines that we fought and it's just a waste of time?
When he finished, I was about to ask him if he could be heard. And I know Dave and...
Al, if you can get in front of the mic because...
Dave and Angelo are familiar with this. When the power lines came through, we went before that siding board. It was hell. That's the simplest way to put it.
Looks like we were not even there.
We eventually managed to get...
It was a lot better to go before Judge Torres in the federal court.
Well, we eventually managed to get the electric lines on the north side of Wakefield Street moved to an easement a little bit away from the homes. But going before that siding board was a study in frustration.
Yeah, they got their mind made up before we even got there.
Yeah.
So as a town, if we side with this, how much impact does it actually have? I mean, it seems to me that there's something to be said for numbers. I personally know, I have relatives who live in the area, so I'm in the area quite often, and I've talked to numerous people who are completely against this.
All I can say, Councilman, is from my experience up there, I went up with quite a bit of evidence regarding... At that point in time, and I know I'm off the subject, but they had a proposal to come where the lines were or to go in the western part of the state at the same expense through a wooded area that had no residents. And the siding board came in, and my argument was if there is a potential for these wires causing a problem with children in the area, why not go out west in Rhode Island at the same expense and, you know, not be in a residential area? And they flatly told me, basically they said, because we don't want them. I mean, that's what you were dealing with, with the people we went before. They adjourned the meeting while one of our town residents was speaking.
And just one more question. How far away from Buck Hill Campground is this?
Sorry I'm late, gentlemen, ladies. My name is Ray Trank. I'm a member of the Burrival Town Council. I work with Mike on that. It is adjoining. The 27,000 acres of preserved land around it includes Buck Hill, includes George Washington, Quoddy in Connecticut, Douglas State Forest in Massachusetts. So basically, the north-south trail, if you're familiar with that, runs the borderline. But there is one question about this, is because they have a 200-acre piece of land, they haven't identified where in the 200-acre piece of land the actual site's going to be. And the Burrival Planning Board, the Burrival Zoning Board, all turned in, were all asked for opinions, all turned in incomplete opinions because they have no plans. And they were told by the company that this is the way energy plants are always built, that the plans will come later. Are you kidding me? Do you let people build houses like that? Do you let people build businesses? One of the concurrent themes in the 30 towns that have backed us in this battle is the loss of local control. You can pick an item, casino, airport, landfill. We had a special bill going into the legislation, I'm sure you're familiar with this kind of skullduggery, in the 80s, which greased the skids for Burrival to become a power plant haven. What little rights we had at the time were taken away. That's why we have the power plant that we have. That's why we have the frac gas accelerator that we have. And that's why they want to put this plant there. Because the law, this Rhode Island state law, really opens up Burrival to power plants. So, you know, when people say, people have said to us over the time we've been out doing this map, what does this have to do with us? It's going to be used sooner or later. And what we're trying to prove with this map is that all of Rhode Island get together and say, hey, we want to have some say in what's in our communities.
Now, I know Johnston kind of backed Doig and was going to be supplying water to that. That water's coming from the Citroen Reservoir.
Yes, sir.
I mean, I don't think the Citroen Reservoir was designed for that type of commercial property up there. And I don't think it was, you know, the amount of water they're going to be taking and tanking up there per day is pretty crazy considering the amount of water bans we already have in this community, in the state, based upon droughts and whatever.
Well, they're going by what they allow Johnston to use that they're not using, if I'm not mistaken. So it's like what we do with the sewer. We allow Coventry so many gallons, and if they don't use it, they can use it. And that's how they got away with getting the water to... Got away with it. They haven't got away with it yet. Well, trying to get away.
So one thing that's interesting that you may not have heard of, it's actually breaking news today. So the Conservation Law Foundation is one of the intervenors that's trying to oppose this, as well as the town of Burrival. They've actually filed a lawsuit against Energy on the use of that water, going back to how the contract is stated, basically saying that it's not intended for the use to outsource the water to another company outside your municipality. It's supposed to be for, you know, the people or the businesses of that particular...
Drinking, fire protection, swimming pools, you know, quality of life. The town of Burrival has also joined in there, having their own separate suit and the same thing. There's also 11 open meetings complaints. There's a lawsuit on the meeting that they held. So, you know, I wouldn't say that Johnston's going to be supplying the water just yet. My opinion is on this, being a councilman in this community, I think that you should have the number one say. Burrival should have the say, not West Warwick, not Coventry. And I'd feel the same way if it was West Warwick. Burrival shouldn't have the say. So I support this for that reason because you people know what you want and your constituents want in that area. And they dictate to us what we have to have. So that's why I am against this. I don't know if it's good for the state, if it's bad for the state. I didn't even get into that, but just my opinion is they're shoving this down a community that doesn't want it. And for that, I would be in favor of supporting their bill. Thank you. Not without getting into anything else, Al.
No, I agree. You know, it may not help, but in the end at least we're supporting you and showing solid irony there, so... I agree with Councilman Padua.
So do I.
And I've had some conversations with individuals on the phone last week.
Yeah.
People here from West Warwick who used to live in Burrival and were against the plan back then. And now they're against this plan and they live here, so... I agree. I support it 100% and I can go from there.
Let's just write the letter's up on it and...
So Mike, we'll get the...
Good luck, guys.
And we'll have the clerk send that over to you.
Thank you very much. If you could, just have the clerk talk to our clerk and she'll tell you where we're going.
We have the resolution here. We're going to sign the resolution. We'll get it over to you.
Very good.
And it's important if you can send that into the EFSP. It's on the correspondence for the...
Is that that form?
I believe so.
It's on here. It's on the correspondence, but do you know where to send it?
If it's not on that letter, I can follow up tonight with an email.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you very much. Thanks, guys.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you.
Good luck, people. It's a long ride. You guys come a long way tonight.
It's a long ride.
We're typical Rhode Islanders, way down there.
Stop into some of the local restaurants.
Energy Siding Board.
We could have asked them that, if they supported the casino.
If I could just make a quick comment to the council members. I have been getting complaints from people watching this online that certain council members like to sit way back from the microphones and will not pick you up if you're sitting back. You have to be within about five inches of it.
Well, I know they're not talking about me.
Their voice activated. No, they say Angelo's loud and clear. And you especially, and Tim, sometimes when he speaks, he's like... But when you're speaking to be heard, just make sure the mic, because they are voice activated.
Consent agenda, license applications, resolved that the consent agenda, having been posted, all matters being referred to the proper departments and being disposed of or awaiting recommendation the same as hereby approved.
I'll move the resolution.
I'll second the resolution.
Move and second, any discussion? Any public discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. The two licenses that were approved was Expressions Photo Booth and Screen MDT.
Consent agenda correspondence, resolved that the consent agenda, having been posted, all matters being referred to the proper departments and being disposed or waiting recommendation the same as hereby approved.
Move the resolution.
Second the resolution.
Move and second. Any discussion? Just a couple of letters, people requesting to be reappointed or appointed. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Appointment for Board of Assessment and Review, resolved that the town council hereby appoints the following individual to serve as a member for the Board of Assessment and Review for the town of West Warwick with their term to expire on March 2020.
I'll move the resolution.
Second the resolution.
Move and second. Any discussion?
Uh, there's only one name here. He's been on it. Dean DeTonicourt. I'll move the name of Dean DeTonicourt for reappointment.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Dean's actually here tonight. He's in the back row. Again, he's always fair, pretty good. He's been on the assessment board now how many years, Dean?
23.
So...
Short-term.
Short-term.
I'm just getting good at it.
So with that being said, any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you, Dean, for all your years of service.
Appointment for Board of Tenant and Affairs, resolved that the town council hereby appoints the following individual to serve as a member for the Board of Tenant and Affairs for the town of West Warwick with the term to expire February of 2019.
I'll move the resolution.
Second the resolution.
Move and second. Discussion?
I'll move the name of Roger Noel, again, the only one for reappointment to the board.
I'll second.
Is Roger here tonight? Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Appointment for the Board of West Warwick Public Library Trustees, resolved that the town council hereby appoints the following individual to serve as a member for the Board of the West Warwick Public Library Trustees for the town of West Warwick with their term to expire on February of 2018.
I'll move the resolution.
I'll second.
Move and second. Discussion?
I'd like to table this. There's only one name on this. And I received a couple of letters against this individual. One is from the library, and I have my doubts myself. So I would make a motion to table this until we could further discuss it.
Do you have those letters?
They want to be anonymous.
We don't accept anonymous letters.
I got the name on it. They wanted me to keep them anonymous.
Because I could tell you that.
Okay, then I'm against the appointment.
Okay, but I'm just letting you know that the library called me directly and said they're in favor of Brian. And they sent me an email saying that I could see him on it.
And there was someone from the library that's not in favor of it also.
I would be for this.
I have a motion on the floor to table.
Table.
I'll second.
I want to take a roll call vote. You can vote yes to table, no not to table. Angelo?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
John?
No.
I vote no. Jay?
No.
Thank you. So somebody want to move the name of Brian Tucker?
I'll move the name of Brian Tucker.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Three to two.
Appointment for Recreation Committee, resolved that the town council hereby appoints the following individual to serve as a member for the Board of Recreation Committee for the town of West Warwick in Wardford.
I'll move the resolution.
I'll second.
Move and second. Discussion?
I'll move the name of Michael Gorven. He's been involved in all football for the Crompton Vets and his father. And there's one name that put in, and it was a good choice.
I don't know this gentleman, and he looks like he'd be the right person. It seems like he's involved. Is he with the Steelers?
Yes.
My only thing was, it's not a complete application. There are like three lines not filled out, so I... And I don't know this person, so...
Did you look at the other application you just approved?
Yes, I did.
Then we're all filled out?
We're talking about this one, aren't we?
I can tell you with Mike, he's Vice President of the Steelers. He's a young guy. He's involved. And serving on the Recreation Committee for 12 years. It's more of a Parks and Fields Commission. And we don't have a representative from the Steelers there. I think he'd be a good fit. We have Cal Ripken, Dave's the liaison from the council. I think it'd be a good fit for Wardford, and he'd be good to represent me there, so...
Yeah, I don't disagree. That's...
But I also, while we're on the topic of the Recreation Committee, I think this committee should meet on a more regular basis.
Monthly.
It should be monthly, because there's always something to talk about. And it was a little...
You're off the agenda, Mr. Council.
I know. Can I continue off the agenda?
Well, you could do so at your own peril.
Okay.
The fact of the matter is that this is an issue regarding an appointment, not the procedures and policies about how...
Why are we staying in the public comments?
All right, okay.
I have a second for Mr. Gorven. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Connect the dots.
Street abandonment, Arthur Street.
So there's a proposed project on Arthur Street, which for those...
She has to read it.
I'm sorry, sorry.
You gotta read it. I make a motion to waive the reading.
Well, just say what it is first.
It's the abandonment of Arthur Street. She said that. I'll move the resolution.
My second.
Move to waive the reading, seconded. All in favor to waive the reading?
Aye.
Aye.
Now I'll move the resolution.
I'll second.
Sir?
Jay, you can actually, if you want to give...
Well, you can start though, sir. All right, so this is a proposed project on Arthur Street, the paper portion of Arthur Street. It runs parallel, for those not familiar with Patuxet Terrace. This project was approved by Planning in 2005. Is that the correct year, sir?
Between 2005 and 2008, it was pending before the planning board.
So several things happened in that time, one of which is, you know, the economy kind of went in the tank and an extension was given, and that's why it's coming back up now. I did my due diligence. I did have organized some of the neighbors in my neighborhood for a public meeting last night. Some were in favor of it, some weren't. I think the meeting as a whole went well as far as getting information out there to the public. It has a master plan approval and DEM approval already. My concern, there were two concerns I had, both of which I think you guys took care of. One was the traffic. I was concerned that I didn't want the traffic to go out through Moretti Street. If you're familiar, there Moretti continues out where it's, there's really nothing. It leads into the woods. Both you gentlemen said this project will not be going through there. It's going to go out to Pulaski Street. And the other concern I had was what was going to be put there, what kind of condos, what kind of dwellings. They will be condos you're going to be selling. They won't be for rent. And they're somewhere in the neighborhood of $200,000 or market value at the time. Is that correct?
Between approximately $250,000.
Okay, sorry, $250,000.
We don't want to undersell ourselves.
I apologize.
We'll sell them faster than $200,000.
I'll let you, while you take the floor, sir.
Sure. Mr. President Tom Cronin, Attorney at Law Nolan Bernero-Cronin-Ferrara for the applicant Shoreline Properties. The, as a matter of procedure, per statute, this road abandonment has been brought before the council. The council has ordered the necessary notice advertisement three times in the, you know, daily newspaper. And the abutters to the road have been notified via certified mail. Madam Clerk and I compared notes on that prior to the session, and all that information is available to the council. I have handed out a map which shows the area of abandonment. As the council is aware, this is a paper street on the plat maps of the town of West Warwick. It's an extension of Arthur Street. It has never been developed, never been used as a road. It exists between Pulaski Street and Jefferson Street along the Patuxet River. The Patuxet River lies to the east, Jefferson Street to the north, the Street of Patuxet Terrace to the west, and Pulaski Street again to the south, across the street from the daycare, which you're all familiar with. The, my client is the owner of both sides of the street. Notice went to him. Under the abandonment statute, the property itself would go to him in equal shares on either side. It's approximately 6.75, 7, 8 acre lot. The proposal is to build a condominium development, which is why the road abandonment is a necessity as the town frowns upon us building condominiums on public streets. So far, they haven't let us do that. So we're going to have public maintenance, excuse me, private maintenance of the road after the private road is built. 20 units have been proposed. As Councilman Messia pointed out, it's been master plan approval and DEM approval of the project. We did have a neighborhood meeting last night where we addressed some of the concerns of the neighbors. But I do have a map of the project, if anyone's interested. I understand that that's not the topic before the council tonight, and I do not wish to waste the council's time. So in a straightforward manner, the only qualification that I would add at this time is that the proposed abandonment is not for the entire portion of the road from Pulaski Street to Jefferson. The last two lots on Jefferson are part of a different plat and not under the ownership of my client, and they're not included in our request. And so I just wanted to point that out to the council. Thank you for your time.
Which two lots you talking about?
All the way to the north as they abut Jefferson Street.
One's not highlighted.
If you were looking at, these are the two lots that would have frontage on Jefferson right now.
That's right.
These two right now.
Yes.
And not being landlocked in no way, shape, or form.
That's correct.
I can't remember. It looks like lot 26 under the name of McCloy. And the other one looks like under lot 23, under the name of The Wolf.
Correct. That's correct.
Very good eyes. Any comment from the council? Any public comment?
I actually, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Jay.
I do want to say that there was this gentleman right here. He might bring this up. One of the concerns is about construction equipment coming through the neighborhood. So if we approve this tonight, I would just ask that you, that the equipment comes through Pulaski Street rather than through the neighborhood where Patuxet Terrace is. And I'm pretty sure that that's probably the most logical travel anyway, but it was a concern that was brought up to me.
I would agree that the most logical, the only entrance and exit to the project is from Pulaski Street. There'd be no reason to use Patuxet Terrace.
Tom, I have one question. Al, maybe you can help me on this. But the two lots you just identified as not being abandoned, you also have, from that point of demarcation, a significant part of Arthur Street up to the line that looks to be the line that's on the second page. You're asking that is going to be abandoned?
That is going to be abandoned.
Here to here?
Yes. Mr. Williamson, under the master plan as approved by the town, that's an open space easement that is going to be part of the project but not developed. So yes, that is part of the requested abandonment.
You're asking that that be abandoned?
Yes.
Sir, just come on up, identify yourself. Name and address.
Matthew Dowling. I live at 120 Patuxet Terrace. One of my big concerns is you're giving public land to...
Uh, one of my big concerns is you're giving public land to a private entity, private entity that's gonna make a substantial profit on it. Um, I don't know how any of the people you represent, but I'm definitely against giving public land for profit. I don't know how you all feel about that.
Well, that was a.
We did have this discussion.
Jay contacted me on and I know I'm supposed to be, uh, giving Angelo a call this week, because he's got the same situation going on down on his ward, up in the neighborhood behind West Valley Inn over there. Somebody's buying all the land to avoid somebody to come in and build and, um, they want to purchase the property from us. And I said, well, that's a no-brainer. If it's a paper street and you want to buy it from us, that's great. Um, so I actually gave Angelo his number to contact him. Uh, you know, that, that is a good question. I mean.
Well, the town looks at it in a couple of ways. Number one, if, um, if, if an abandonment is going to result in increased value in a property, um, the town will immediately, uh, see a tax benefit, uh, because of, uh, the development being done. It's pretty common actually, if it's, uh, if it's, uh, vacant land and there's no other, um, obvious potential use there that the town, uh, can and often does abandon if in fact there's a development that's gonna increase substantial value, which would turn into tax benefit in perpetuity for the town. So that's what we look at in those types of scenarios.
Look at it two different ways. I understand your point, but then if they developed all single-family homes and we put the road in, we'd have to.
We'd have to maintain it.
Maintain the road, garbage, uh, and, and whatever else, plowing and whatever else. So with a condo association, from that point in, it's none of our responsibility.
It is, it is a discussion we did have.
Nineteen houses would bring more to the tax rolls.
No.
You say that, but then you gotta look at.
Children going to school.
If you get all three bedrooms and you bring in twenty-five children to the school system, you gotta look at that expense. There's, there's a lot more.
Sixteen thousand per child.
The, was it the town planner that was here last night?
Well, he, he said if it was one or two children though, in that conversation.
Yeah, but he said.
He said one or two.
That whole thing is in flux. So you might get two kids in first grade, two kids in third grade and.
Take, take Royal Mills for an example.
Four kids graduating. So it all.
Last, last known.
That's what I got from your.
Last known at Royal Mills when they developed, that was one of the concerns. And the way they pitched it to us was that, um, when originally it was gonna be condos, that was a big thing for the town. There is, I think there's less than five children right now who live in the Royal Mills area. Um, and that's, we're not anti-child, but we gotta watch it, we gotta watch it, the crowding of the schools. If we get overcrowded or whatever, we as a community do not have money to expand any of our school systems or anything right now. So there, there's pros and cons of selling and not selling the property. And you, you gotta, you gotta put that on a scale and weigh what's your best option. Um, now for instance, the one in Angelo's ward that's probably gonna be coming for the council within the next six months is one person trying to block development. So they bought their property behind them and that little, there's a little paper street in between them. And there's no gain for anybody except for them and that's why they're willing to buy it. And that was a discussion we did have. So, you know, there's gain here because if they put the twenty houses in, single-family, and then we gotta maintain another road and, you know, and very expensive to maintain, along with picking up trash and all that good stuff, including fire.
Well, they're gonna get fire.
But you're gonna have to have.
Well, you're gonna have fire in there, but, um, it's a little less, uh, development of a road than.
What we've been trying to do, it's been going on for now three years and John's out sick, he can't explain it, but Fred's here. Um, we're trying to get all abandoned, all, all properties that the town owns, like ten-foot, uh, sections between my house and your house and properties that the town's not using and give it to the people, uh, for what taxes a road or whatever, to get it on the tax rolls, because we're not in the real estate business. We don't want to own this property. So if we give it to the residents that live there, it gets back on the tax rolls and gives us more money, because we don't have that much room for, for growth.
Oh, no, I understand that.
You know, and, and to me.
Giving him that.
What sells me, I understand what you're saying too, but what sells me on condos over homes is there's sixteen thousand dollars per child to go to school. And the odds are condos, very few children, the, the percentage is minute compared to what it would be with homes.
And I believe these are two, I believe these are two bedrooms as well, is that correct?
And even if you say four kids graduate, four kids come to school, it's, that's four kids we could have saved. You know, that's, we're getting four, five thousand dollars taxes on a house and it costs us sixteen thousand dollars to send one child. We're losing twelve grand every time we, we build a home. So that's the way I figure it and, uh, I understand perfectly what you're saying, but I.
Because I would be more if he was willing to purchase that land from the town as opposed to the town giving it to him. Because if I want more property, I have to buy it.
In the long run, he is paying for it. It is, it's not, it's not a wash.
The other, the other portion of it is the time is of the essence also, because when we sell property, we actually have to put that on a ballot.
Anything over so, so much money?
Over so, we, we had to do it with the dam down in Natick. Uh, there's, there's a few pieces that we've done over the past few years, um, that we have sold, but it's going on a ballot and it's one of the questions that the voters vote on.
Yeah, because then everybody in the town has a say what the town does with that land. Not just.
They appraise it. I think if it's over, how much was it to me? If it was over a certain dollar amount, you had, it had to go up otherwise.
Any trans, any financial transaction regarding buying or purchasing or selling a property usually has to go before the financial town meeting and a dollar amount by, uh, the home road charter is very low.
Right.
So, but when you have abandonment issues, um, of this road, again, it's a cost benefit analysis to the town, really. Because right now that's bringing in zero and your, your argument is they should buy it.
Well, they still pay taxes on it, it's just under.
Before, before they even, before even that the condo's up, they're gonna, they're gonna spend money to develop that road just to get what they laid in there. So, I mean, it plus it's very difficult to put an appraised value on that piece of property right now because the way it's cut up between all the lots. So, I mean, I think the council understands your position that it probably should be purchased. If it's gonna be purchased, they're just gonna tack that on. I mean, they're not gonna lose any money if they purchase it. That's the cost of doing business.
Yes, but the town wouldn't be giving them money.
The town, the town isn't giving because the town's gonna be getting once the condominiums are up and the taxes come in. So right now the town's getting nothing from that piece of property. Once this development goes in, the town will be receiving.
Well, that property's still taxed, right?
No, the, the right-of-way itself is not taxed.
No, not the right-of-way, but all the other properties.
Absolutely.
But the amount, the amount of.
You're talking about the right-of-way.
Much less.
Giving away.
It's gonna be with the condos on.
It was a concern that I did bring up.
Okay, thank you, Jay. They did, he, he did call me on it and, you know, I agree, but it's, it's one of those situations where you gotta just weigh out the, the pros and cons. Thank you.
If I might, one thing that has not been raised, Fred and I went through this several years ago, abandoned streets in this town. In my opinion, and I wrote a letter to the then-town manager, they're a big liability. We get a street that doesn't exist, somebody calls nine-one-one and we can't get a, a fire truck through there, because the street doesn't exist, but it's a public street. So, uh, those, those, those paper streets in this town are a nightmare as far as I'm concerned.
I, I got, I got the same issue on my property. Once you go past my house, it's all paper street and we put the street up to my house, then after that it's all paper street. And, you know, we've talked about abandoned or, uh, but there's one or two neighbors that need access if they haven't decided to sell their property on the other side, they want the access for that road. So they would have to develop the road. But, you know, I, I understand because it is. I have all sorts of things go on there. People come driving through, park their cars in the woods, do whatever, you know, it's just.
We had one several years ago where the man had agreed not to do it himself and then he wanted us to put the road in. And my concern was, when we, even though he had agreed to it, when he has the heart attack and we can't get the plows through the, the, the fire trucks through the stove because we're not maintaining it, that was a concern of mine.
Thank you, Al. Any other discussion?
Just wanna, I want to commend the, uh, the developers and the lawyer for coming here last night. I might be asked, uh, with the meeting and, um, to let my neighbors know that it is, it's not my direct backyard, but it's still my backyard's backyard and, um, I am in favor of it. Um, but it was, it was not an easy decision to come to. Like I said, I did a lot of, uh, my due diligence, I think, reaching out to both sides.
It was a cold weekend to be walking, huh?
It was, it was a cold weekend. Luckily, thank you today for what Dave and some of the neighbors did, uh, walking around for me.
All right. Um, with that being said, uh, no more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Thank you.
Good luck. Bring some money into this town, will ya?
I thought you were doing roll call, that's why I was waiting.
An ordinance amending append, appendixy traffic ordinance of the Code of Ordnance of the Town of West Warwick, and this is a first reading.
I'll move the ordinance.
I'll second.
Move and seconded, discussion? Al?
So it comes to you from the Traffic Review Committee. Uh, some member of the council, I don't know where it was, uh, must have requested it with the Traffic Committee. The Traffic Committee agreed that on Douglas Street, uh, no parking signs go up and no parking between the two signs and it's directly across from Sisson Street.
Who, whose ward is that?
Mine.
Yours?
Um. There's just been some out of control parking down there, um, especially with the plows. I know one of my constituents calls me and tells me that they're parking right in his backyard now. Um, so we, we need to definitely, uh, make sure that we're taken care of, because that, I don't know if anybody's been up Sisson and Douglas, it just, I don't even know how it was ever even.
This request also comes from, uh, from Fred Gill at Public Works. Apparently it's a problem for them also.
Yeah, I, I, I actually dropped one of the basketball kids off over there on Sisson Street and I come through my twenty-five hundred and I, I, I'm trying to figure out how to squeeze through there sometimes, so I, I, I just don't know how, how they, when, when they get up to that bottleneck, it just, people just pop all over the place. But also, um, what was brought to my attention this weekend is there's two unretained cars sitting right there also, so if we can maybe take a look at that. Um, with that being said, any other discussion? Any public discussion? Karen, none? Roll call, vote. Angelo?
Yes.
Jay? Jason?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Ordnance number two thousand seventeen dash eight, first reading sponsored by Council Vice President D'Amico, an ordinance amending chapter four, animals in foul, article two, animal control of the Code of Ordnance of the Town of West Warwick.
I'll move the ordinance.
My second.
Move and seconded, discussion? Al?
Well, can I, can I stop? Um, thank you, Al. So several weeks ago, I received a letter from Dennis Tavella, who's, um, I believe the president of the Defenders of Animals. Um, and one of the things that he brought to my attention was the fact that the current animal control ordinance does not account for ambient temperature, which essentially means that an animal can be outside for a prolonged period of time and can be severely affected by either severe cold or severe heat based on a scale, an ambient temperature scale. Um, so I was a little surprised that we didn't actually have that in our, our ordinance, so I had turned it over to, um, Solicitor DiFiore and, um, you know, he, he looked at it and he felt that there were other issues that he'll probably elaborate on as far as a lot of the language being outdated. Um, it's pretty old language. Um, so he'll address that. The other thing is that, um, while I was campaigning, a number of people complained, um, about roosters, which, you know, according to the ordinance, nobody's supposed to have a rooster. Um, I think it's up to what, twelve hens they can have, is that correct?
I think it's twelve.
No roosters. So I wanted him to tighten that language, uh, so I know it sounds silly, but, um, we can't have roosters, so.
How much tighter can no roosters get?
It's a little tighter, right? Language is a little bit tighter.
Absolutely no roosters.
It's strictly.
Three exclamation points?
If we're gonna, if we're gonna have, uh, if we're gonna have barnyard animals, we're not having roosters. So if you wanted to elaborate on that.
It's always been in the ordinance.
It's always been in the ordinance.
No, but you know what? I, I want, I want people to know that it is strictly not allowed and I'd like to see enforcement of that, because apparently people have roosters.
Well, I, one of the issues that comes up is when they.
My neighborhood.
When you go down to Ague and you buy the little chicks.
It's old school.
It's a hit or miss. And it's, it's when they, it's when they grow up that you realize, oh.
So maybe they need to turn it over to a petting zoo.
Well, what happens is if somebody receives the eggs or whatever, they don't, like, you can get them, you can go to Danny's auction and they're selling the eggs or whatever and all of a sudden they hatch and all of a sudden, somebody's got a rooster and their kids really like it, they don't want to get rid of it and.
Seriously.
We run into a lot of.
In all seriousness, for me, this is more about the ambient, uh, temperature control. Um, you know, we all know that person who leaves their dog out hours on end and, uh, you know, especially like this last, this past weekend, it was freezing. So if you wanted to elaborate on that, I appreciate.
So just the ambient control is the temper, I put a definition in because I didn't know what it was, and it's the temperature surrounding the animal. The other thing that I might point out is that the various ordinances and laws and regulations and especially the state law, they rep, in determining what the temperature's supposed to be, they rep, they go to something called a Tufts Animal Control and Condition Scale that Tufts University puts out, uh, for guidance for, uh, the police departments and what have you, to determine whether or not the animal is in, uh, in danger. The section on the animal being left in a vehicle, that is a copy of the state law and one of the things that I think is very important in that section, and I made sure I checked with the state law, is that our police officers who go to enforce this, maybe breaking into an automobile, uh, to rescue that animal, is protected by state law from civil or criminal penalty.
So, uh, what about like a citizen? It's only, only.
Uh, the dog officer or police officer.
Okay, so, so citizens should not be doing this on their own?
Citizens should not be breaking into a vehicle.
I'm, I mean, I'm, it's serious. This happens throughout the sun, people, no, no, it's a love, but people do do that.
It's a serious question.
Well, they should call the police.
Yeah, the, the other, and this I just came about in, in reviewing the statute, uh, and reviewing our ordinance rather, uh, dogs prohibited in certain places. Our ordinance made reference to seeing eye dogs. Today, I don't think that's the con, the term that is used, so I changed it to service and or therapy dogs, just to bring it into, uh.
Al, just one thing here. I know it says school property, but it should be also the, the parks, the pla, the playgrounds, because there's so many complaints that we get that the dogs.
I didn't make any substantive changes. The council wishes to add that as an amendment.
I would, I mean, I, I'm just gonna bring up, Dave, you know, we got a lot of calls, the kids are playing baseball, sliding in dog, uh, mess that they're not cleaning up, uh, they, they had it on the track, uh, the people walking on the track, brand new track.
Angelo, I would, I would ask the question of when you're making a reference to parks, are you making a reference to town-owned parks?
Well, not, more or less, baseball fields, uh, playing fields for the children.
Town recreation.
Town recreation areas and play fields.
The basketball courts, the ba, the ba, uh, baseball fields.
If you do town recreation areas.
Right, a cover.
That'll cover all.
This way here, because they, they let their dogs, I seen them in Natick Park, they, they run their dogs, they don't carry a bag, they don't pick it up. A lot of people are good, but most of them just leave it there.
Then I, I will make that amendment for second reading.
That'd be good. Thanks, Al.
Uh, one, one other, and it's off the subject about the chickens. The golf league that I'm in charge of in Florida, I couldn't go to a meeting because I had to come up here the night of the ordinance. Since then I have been referred to in Florida as the chicken man. And the only reason I come back to Rhode Island is because the council has determined I gotta go count the chickens to make sure nobody's over.
Did they give you a, a discount, right?
No.
Rooster, rooster DiFiore sent.
All right, John Wayne, Rooster Cogburn.
I will, I will submit to Paula that amendment on those sections, uh, town recreation areas for your second reading.
Thanks, Al.
All right, any other discussion? Any public discussion? Karen, none? Roll call, vote. Angelo?
Yes.
That's as amended?
Yeah, as amended.
As amended.
I vote yes, as amended.
Jason?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Ordnance number two thousand seventeen dash nine, second reading, an ordinance amending chapter four of the West Warwick Pension Plan, excluding police and fire in article thirty-two point four of the Collective Bargaining Agreement between the Town of West Warwick and Rhode Island Council Ninety-four, as may local twenty forty-five, effective July first of fourteen to June thirtieth of two thousand nineteen.
Could you repeat that, please?
No.
I'll move the ordinance.
I'll second.
Move and seconded, discussion?
This is, um, second reading. This is again, the, um, uh, we had held an executive session on this matter, uh, several. This is, um, second reading, this is again the, um, uh, we had held an executive session on this matter, uh, several months back. It was a request from Council Ninety-four to exclude certain members from, um, this provision of the pension plan. Uh, this has already been approved by the courts, um, at, at our request, um, so that was, um, so the, the, the consent decree, which made this formal, has been amended officially, so this is the necessary step at the town level to, uh, finish that process.
With this being said, there's five individuals on here, could there be any more individuals coming forward?
Not, right now, any other changes would have to go through the exact same process we went through, um, with these five. So that was about a four-month process from start to finish.
Including the courts.
Including the courts, so we'd have to go through that entirely, we can't make any changes of this, because it's already been...
But this was a different circumstance, what we discussed in the executive session, I mean, I don't think that we're gonna see that in the, in the future.
You might.
You will.
But... But this is, I mean, it has to go through that exact process, because this was court sanctioned.
How many more are you thinking, when you say you might?
Yeah, we don't know. But again, we don't, it, that's something the council would, um, take under consideration on a case-by-case basis. It's nothing that you're required to do.
Okay.
Any other comment from the council? Any public comment? Ian, just state your name for the record.
Ian Cootu, twelve Patrick Quinn Drive, um, I would be one that would be eligible under that program, and I was excluded from that, and I also understand that there's also another member of the union that would be eligible.
Again, this was a request from the union, these are the names that were provided to us from the union. The, um, ordinance, the change to the consent decree was drafted, forwarded to the union for approval, to verification of all the names, um, that was done three different times, and we went through this entire process, through the courts.
We have so many in the union.
Yeah, and, and so, I mean, we've gone through this process, so if, if, if what you're saying is true, then again, you'd have to go through a similar process, is, is what I'm saying.
So if the names were presented, how did they get the other five names? And how come everybody who was eligible wasn't made a part of this list?
That's a conversation with your union, because this is, this was a direct request from the union to the town, and we, we considered it, I brought it to the council, um, they agreed, and then we moved it forward. So if, if there are additional individuals, we'd have to look at it like we did those five, so...
So wouldn't this be an ordinance other than name-specific, but just for anybody who was eligible during that time period?
That is not how it was presented.
Because of the consent decree that was agreed upon by the court, a couple of years ago, any change has to go through the courts, and the court has already approved specifically by name, not a generic, just by either position or by a certain set of facts, all right, it's by name, that was presented to the court, that's been approved, all this is really doing is ratifying what the court's already done. Does it preclude you, exclude you, because you can apply just like these five individuals did, or if there's somebody else? But again, as Fred mentioned, that's something you take up with your union, not with management.
Okay, well, we've done that, but we seem to be playing a tennis match, because we go back and forth, back and forth.
The union brought it to us, we had no play in that.
I, I had a brief conversation with Ian, I did let her know that the union did come to us, did come to us, and they supplied five names, not date of births or anything like that, just five names, and just to make it clear, the council at first, and this was the previous council, not this existing council, um, was not gonna entertain it at first. We looked at it, and then a situation came up, and we said this is the perfect time to negotiate, and that's what we did, is we negotiated, now, um, if I'm correct, everything was sent over to the union, the union lawyers looked at it, they approve it, they, and this went back and forth, our attorney and their attorney, the union's attorney, went back and forth with it, and it all got approved through the union. Now, um, the only thing that I can't confirm is if there was a vote or a meeting with the union.
I guess what I...
I can't even confirm that, because that's not my business, I don't attend union meetings, or the council doesn't attend union meetings, so it would be... And before you go any further, I just wanna let everyone know, management in this particular situation really can't advise or give you any type of instruction as a member of the union, because that in and of itself is a violation of collective bargaining. So if you've got an issue with your union, you know what they did or did not do for you, that's something to take up internally with your union.
Okay, well, I guess what I don't understand is how five names get picked, how these five individuals are chosen, and other people who are still eligible.
But that would be internal to your union, because the five names were presented to management, not six, not seven, not eight, and certainly was not presented open-ended. So when they were presented, and this was in its preliminary stage, there were five names, one gentleman had filed a lawsuit, four others came on, that information was provided to the manager, and again, they were, uh, not a workshop, an executive session, it's always been the five names, because of the way the consent order was crafted by the court and by the parties, uh, for the last litigation going on a couple of years ago, everything has to be very, very, very specific. And Ian, if, if I remember correctly, one thing that was asked in that executive session by myself, and I think Councilman Drew at the time, was how many more are we expecting, and we were actually told none, and that's why...
That's what we were told. I asked the question myself.
We all asked.
Well, that doesn't make any sense.
No, that's, it, it, it doesn't, and again, it's... That's why it's internal to you and your union, and or union, the executive board, but again, that's not information that was provided to the council, the only information provided to the council were five names, period.
Okay, well, we'll have to do what we have to do.
Yep.
Good luck. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, Angelo?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Ayes have it.
Ordinance number two thousand seventeen dash ten, first reading, an ordinance amending chapter seven, article two of fire prevention section seven dash sixteen of state code adopted by the Code of Ordinance of the Town of West Warwick.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Moving second, discussion?
Our fire code just says that, uh, our fire code is whatever the state fire safety code is. Couple of weeks ago, I got a call from, uh, Fire Marshal Bobola, a little bit concerned, because the fire code for the state had been amended, and he, uh, was concerned as to whether or not the amendment to the state code would automatically take, uh, become effective for us. My opinion was, yes, it does, but because, only because he felt uncomfortable with it, I just felt that it would make it clear that as that state code gets amended, so does our ordinance get amended, and we are in line with the state code at all times, and it's more of a housekeeping matter, just to make sure there's no questions as to was, is our code what it was, what the fire code was when it was enacted, or is our fire code what the fire code is today? This says it is up to date with the state at all times.
Any questions for Al? Any public comment? Here in none, roll call vote, Angelo?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
Going back to Florida, Al?
Yep.
Gonna beat the storms?
Rooster.
Can't snub the rooster.
I'm gonna put a rooster on the plane with you.
Al, don't, Al, don't put all your eggs in one basket.
Have a safe trip.
Thank you, Al.
Bye, Al.
Discussion, action, budget workshops, um, regarding departments.
Put this up.
We did.
Fred?
So, um, I think a few meetings ago, John Samino, um, had presented you with a timeline for the budget process. Couple of things we need to clarify, um, some of the, uh, rough dates, again, they were just markers at that time to say, um, you know, budget workshop here and here, uh, the first budget workshop that he identified was for the twenty-first of this month, which is a Tuesday, I want to confirm that date, so that we can get that, um, advertised. Actually, yeah, that, that was the, that was the issue, yeah, there's a council meeting on that, so I, we needed to have a meeting that, a workshop that week, so would you prefer the Wednesday, the twenty-second, or the Monday?
Well, the only concern I have, Paul, do you have, what do, what do you have on the agenda for the twenty-first? Is there anything, or is it, can we just cancel the council meeting?
I got a lot, yeah.
That's a sewer commission meeting also.
Correct.
It's, it's a big meeting.
Yeah, and the, and, and, you know, this budget workshops take a while, so...
So...
I have ordinances for that second meeting.
I would suggest a separate night if we could.
I got licenses and stuff.
Do the Wednesday?
And I got people that are applying for...
Probably, Monday would be probably better for me, I don't know about you guys.
How about you guys?
I'll make myself available.
Yeah, Monday the twentieth, is that what we're talking about?
I'm fine with Monday the twentieth.
There, but there is no June thirty-first.
So Monday at, um...
No, on this, this budget workshop's July the first, June thirty-first.
Six-thirty, six-thirty, does that work for people?
What's that, March twentieth?
March twentieth, six-thirty, everyone?
What time's six-thirty?
Six-thirty?
Paul, can you send an email to us too, the dates?
Um, and then the following...
So it's Monday the twentieth, correct?
Correct, so then the following, we, we'll stick with the Tuesday, the twenty-eighth for the workshop. Now, the next question is, um, you have as part of the attachment there, the, um, the breakdown of the departments that we did last year, there was some, uh, thought to moving some of those around, you want to stick with what we did last year, or would you like to make any adjustments to that?
I would stay, go as we, as we go along.
Well, I, I'll tell you, um, the school department should be very easy, um, based upon what they're asking for, a zero percent increase to their budget, so, um, I mean, last year, it took a little longer with the school department, it took almost an hour, so I, I think we can, we'll leave that by about five minutes, realistically.
Yep.
Because we really don't, the only thing we have to say in their budget is the appropriation of dollars, so if they're asking us for nothing extra, it's...
Not to talk about...
At that point, so...
Um, so just, I'll, I'll leave it with the ones we have right now, and then if we need to bring somebody back, obviously, we'll bring them back.
I would.
Well, when we post it, we'll post all departments, so if anything comes up, you'll have the ability to do that.
Twenty-eighth is also a six-thirty.
Yep.
Correct, yep, and then, um, as far as the public hearings, the first date that John had there is also a council meeting night, April fourth, so, um, for the, again, that's a public hearing though, it's not a long drawn-out thing, do you want it? Do you want to continue to do the six-thirty public hearing?
And that's April fourth?
Yep, and then, um, April eleventh would be the following week, would be the next public hearing, because we have to be complete by charter by the seventeenth.
If, if we see that, um, and anybody who's been involved in the budget workshops, um, public participation, participation is, uh, pretty low. So, I mean, if, if we see that we have a lot of participation, I can't say that word tonight, um, we can adjust the time to six o'clock.
Sure, yeah, we can also add hearings if we need to, if we feel the need, okay. All right, I think that pretty much covers it for now, so everything else is just estimates, so we can, uh...
The twenty, but it's, uh, July Tuesday?
Yes.
What time on Tuesday, March the twenty?
Six-thirty. Six-thirty.
I just don't have any questions. Any questions for the ballot, for this financial town meeting?
Well, that's for the financial town meeting, we don't know about it, so that's ways off. Okay, thank you.
Um, upcoming appoint, any, any more discussion for budget workshop? Any public discussion? Upcoming appointments, Board of Assessment and Review, which we just filled, Recreation Committee, Ward three and four, we filled four, Board of Canvases and Registration, this is one we need to discuss, um, we had a problem last time with this. Does this have to, and, and Paul, you'll, you'll have to confirm this for Board of Elections, does this have to go through the party chairperson?
What do you mean?
The last time this had to go through the party chairperson, this came before us, and then, and we're going back five years ago, I can't even believe I remember this, but the name was brought forward, but it wasn't brought forward by the party chair, and then the party chair brought the same name forward, but there was some issues that it came before the council, and then later on, we found out that it had to come from the party chair, we did it for the Republican side.
By statute.
By statute, so...
By what statute?
When Alan... Statute of...
For the, no, yeah, Jerry, I know him too. What are you talking about, the Board of Canvases appointment? But now, that's only ruled if it's three of one party, right?
That, that's something we gotta look at.
But for a reappointment?
Any vacancy, any vacancy.
But it's a reappointment, it's not a vacancy.
It's still a vacancy, any vacancy has to be presented by the party who's you're replacing, or if it's an independent, obviously, there's no chairman.
Do we have a party? Is there a party?
I don't know, who's, who's being replaced?
I don't know.
I don't know.
Is it a replacement or, or, what is it?
Well, it's, it's up for appointment, but Ray Lambert is, is asking to be reappointed, because his term's up, it's going to be...
It's a reappointment.
It's a reappointment, his term is up.
It's still a vacancy.
But it has to be publicized three times, which it, what really...
I just don't want no headaches, I want a thumbs up, that's all I ask.
I can ask, I, I really don't know.
Find out.
Just find out, I'm just bringing it up, because I don't want the headaches.
I thought that was a new appointment, I didn't think it was a reappointment.
No, it's a reappointment.
I don't, yeah, but I didn't, I didn't know if that fell into that.
Me, me neither, I, I just remembered five, six years ago, when we had this headache, and it was brought to us, and then it was just, and then it was the Republican chairperson reported to us, and that, that was one of the parties also, and they do, they supply like five names, that they...
I thought that was on a vacancy though, not on a reappointment.
Well, after somebody's term runs out, it becomes vacant until you reappoint them, or, you know, just like anything, you know, all these appointments, for instance, if three people came before us trying for, and one of these people were on the board, and we didn't want them back on the board, we could replace them, see what I'm saying?
Whatever, it is what it is.
The statute is, when Alan General was seventeen dash eight dash one, appointment of bipartisan authority. The mayor or president of the town council shall nominate the members of the canvassing authority from list of party voters submitted by the respective chairpersons of the city or town political committee. So seventeen...
So what happens, what happens if there's, uh, there's not three Democrats or three Republicans on the council? Who's the party chair for that?
No, 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 no. The party chair would be Joe Florio or Felix Apollonia. Is your question if, if it was an independent?
Right.
That's a good question.
That's what I'm saying.
Now, since there's no independent chairperson, and there's no independent party...
Right.
The council could select, because there's no, there's no name to be put forth by either a Democrat or Republican, Andy O'Callmose or whoever else we have.
All right, just a question.
Um, West Warwick Public Library, Board of Trustees, we filled that tonight, Technology Committee, Ward two, three, and...
Four and five.
Four or five, and Board of Town Affairs, two-year, which we filled tonight, public comment, Jay?
I got one thing. Oh, go ahead, start with Jay, sorry.
Um, yeah, going back to, uh, the Recreation Committee, um, I've been a member of it, Dave's been on it, uh, is a liaison to the council. We, we've met sporadically for a long time, and I really think we need to tighten that up. There's always something going on in the parks, uh, in planning, with the leagues, uh, and as, as a volunteer, it's, it's almost like having been chairman, I would get a call, say, hey, there's stuff going on, we need to meet, when can you meet? And then we have to go through the process to make sure we have a quorum, and then we go through like four or five meetings, and then three weeks go by, and the issue which we wanted to talk about already passed. So I really think we should make it once a month, specific day, the first Wednesday of every month, or whatever it may be. But we also need a person, uh, Ray Beatty used to be the, the person that was in charge representing the town, uh, before him, Warren Rentshausen, and, um, they would put the meeting on the Secretary of State's website, they would call the meeting, they would, they would head the meeting, um, and then turn it over to the chairman.
Bobby's in charge of it now.
So I, I think we, we need to have consistency with that, otherwise it's gonna fall apart.
Well, Fred and I had a conversation about this, about...
Yeah, I would just say, I mean, all of our other boards and committees, the chairperson is the one that calls the meetings. I mean, generally how they do is, is the committee gets together and say, all right, let's meet every, the first Wednesday of the month, whatever that is. They, they, they would say, let's meet then, and then they set it up, now, we would assign an individual to administer the board. The administrator does not run the meeting, nor should they, just like I don't run this meeting.
Yeah, Beatty never...
Nor should I.
No, 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 this, this is, this was, he would start, he would, no, he would start the meeting.
He shouldn't.
And then, and then it was turned over to the chairman, but, but he, but he was the one who always called the meetings. So that's why when I called you around, maybe like October or so, when I, I found out, we, we have all these grants in for the splash pad and playgrounds, it was like, all right, wait a minute, other, other people are calling me, and I had no idea what was going on.
Sure.
So I, I thought the process was a little bit differently, because that's how it was for, I don't know, twelve years.
Right.
So I think we just need to make sure that, that process is, is set in motion.
Is there a new chairman?
No, because we haven't... No, because we haven't-
Jay was the chairman.
I was the chairman, and then I was elected to the council, so.
So I'll work with Dave and, or maybe Freddie.
Make a meeting, so it's once a month.
But who, who is the person that's gonna be the, the representative from, from the town?
From the town?
From the town.
Well, I'm gonna let Dave and Freddie decide, tell me who that's gonna be. I mean, Freddie, he's not here, right? All right, we'll say Freddie.
I'll be honest with you, Freddie, Freddie's very involved with the leagues and the-
That, that's what I was thinking too, so, so we'll assign him, and then, but again, he doesn't call the meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
Whoever the chairman is calls the meeting.
Well, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to set up one meeting and appoint a chairperson.
Correct, so we'll do that, we'll call the, the one, then you guys can vote.
Because, see, I'm really not a, I'm really not a vo, I'm a voice and a liaison from the council. So, Mr. Gorvan, Jack Shagru-
Jack Shagru, Paul Richard, who represents Ward 5.
Yep.
And Dan Curran represents 4.
Well, 2 and 4, whatever it is.
Two.
So you have five members.
As the, four mem, four members.
Do you have all their contact information? Well, you do.
I don't have phone numbers, I don't think, I just have their names and-
One for each, Ward 4, there shouldn't there be five?
All right.
Yeah.
We'll set up the first meeting, and we'll, and we'll make sure that the election's held, and that they schedule a regular meeting, then after that, you know, as far as, you know, Freddie can help with agenda ideas, if something, as in relaying information from the town side, but then it's really up to that committee to drive the agenda.
Right, exactly.
We'll post it, we'll do all that stuff, absolutely, but we need, you know, just like the planning board, you know, Elaine does all that, Paula does the zoning board, but she doesn't set the agenda, she just, you know, she puts together, she posts it, she does stuff like that.
Ray may not have set the agenda, but he did put items on the agenda to talk about.
Right.
For instance-
Sure.
The last time I think we really met was the basketball courts, uh, no, the tennis courts. And Ray Silverfield, I think we might have met.
Tennis courts, Ray Silverfield, concession stand.
Yep.
The final phase of Riverport.
Sure.
So I think that was the last time we met, and Ray was here, it's been a go-
Way over a year and a half.
Yeah, okay, so we'll, we'll pull that together right away.
Angelo?
Uh, two things. Uh, one, years ago, and Dave, you'll remember this, we used to get documentation on what jobs were open in the town, we used to get resumes, who applied. Lately, we haven't, well, a long time we haven't again. I, myself, want that again. I got a few calls, saying that we got nepotism going on in town. I don't know what appointments are being, who's hiring who, who went for applications, who didn't get approved, who did, who hired them, who didn't. I, we're elected officials, so myself, anyway, I don't know, I'm not speaking for the rest of the council, unless they want it, but I want it back to where it was, where I got notified of the job openings, and the applicants who put their names in.
To what end on the applicants? I, I'm, I'm fine with letting you know when the-
We always did.
Yeah, but you gotta remember something, we didn't have an HR director.
Correct.
And that was one of the reasons why we wanted an HR director, because we wanted that to stop.
Yeah, but not to say, I, I wanna know what jobs are being posted, what jobs are available, and applicants.
You, you can, I can tell you right now, I go on the West Warwick website once a week.
I don't, I want, I want it, I want it.
Well, you can get every job posting right there, in fact, I got a phone call today, a job posting posted today.
But the applicants, who's, who's getting, who's, who put their names in?
I, I, me personally, I want to be honest with you, that's why we've got an HR director, I should have no say in who gets hired.
No, I'm not saying, I'm not saying we have a say in it.
I don't even want to know who's applying.
I want to know who, and why.
I don't even want to know who's applying.
I do, so, I mean, I'm, I'm speaking for myself, you know? I want that for my personal, um, my personal folder, that's what I want it for, because when people call me and they say, this happened, that happened, I know nothing about it, I represent them, I should know about it, and I'm gonna know about it. That's my opinion. So that's number one, what I wanted there, and I want everybody to watch The Voice tonight, good friend of the families, Johnny Gates and Mary Ann Gates, his son, is on tonight, he got, if you've seen the previews, he turned three chairs around, and now tonight, they're gonna show it, but he's right from Natick, right from West Warwick, and he's gonna put us back on the map, and it couldn't happen to a nicer family, and I just want to congratulate the family, and we're honored to have Johnny a, a member of this community, and we wish him all the luck.
Did a great job, Rod Stewart.
Yeah.
Is he West Warwick graduate?
Yes.
No, Hendrick.
No, Hendrick, went to Catholic school.
Actually, this is the second one in a row for Rhode Island.
The whole family lives in town. That was, you know, Giorgio's grandson. Okay, that's all I have.
So we know Angel is watching tonight, you got it on DVD, because it's time.
I never wa, I quit watching The Voice, and I got a call, and they, make sure, make sure, all right, I will, and I watched it last Monday and Tuesday, and it didn't come up, because they couldn't say when, when it was on, it's some kind of disclosure or something, they couldn't.
Well, they can't tell you anything, it's a sign.
But, you know, I could tell last night when I watched it, and I, and, and then they showed the previews, and then they had him and his family there, you know, and it was, it was-
What channel is that, do we have?
Channel 10.
10.
Channel 10, bruh. 1-0.
It's 8 to 10.
8 to 10.
Fred, think about him for the summer concerts. Throw a big crowd.
I'll tell you what, you got, you got two Rhode Islanders now, you got him, and then you got Billy Gilley.
Actually, there's a, there's a third, uh-
Yeah, there was someone else, too.
There's another one, he, he moved out of Rhode Island, he's in Vermont now, but like, grew up right through high school
Yep.
in Rhode Island.
But that's good news in the town, that's, that's great, when you see someone flourish like that, come from the town and make it good, I wish him all the luck in the world.
He's gonna go far on it, he's good.
Yeah, he is, very good.
I have a few items from Ward 3, actually, they're not specifically Ward 3, this is, um, I don't know if we discussed it, maybe me and Fred, about live streaming the, the planning and zoning meetings, they all take place here, is there any reason that we, we couldn't have them streamed, streamed live like we do this meeting?
Actually, that was one of the things I wanted to bring up tonight, planning is, is done.
Okay.
Pension board is done.